I've already done half the chair.
Okay. It is now seven o'clock. We are ready to start and so I'm gonna formally call to order. Our planning commission meeting, city of Harrisville. On the ninth of February twenty twenty two. Crazy, we're already in the second month of the year. Uh, we'd like to excuse. Two of our commissioners who won't be here tonight. And we would like to welcome those of you. That are here in person, welcome to the mayor and your husband, nice to have him here as always. And we'd like to welcome all of those who are attending online, thank you for your interest. Okay. Let's move on with the agenda. To number item number two. Uh, did everybody get a chance?
We've been having. Sorry.
Yeah, exactly. Well, that's okay, did everybody get a chance to review the notes, any comments, concerns, questions? I think it's not alternative motion to approve our minutes from last planning commission.
Almost took the minutes from January twelve.
January twelfth, did you say January twelfth?
Yep.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay.
Someone I touched this. I said it's yours.
Okay.
Let's use. That's the one we've been having to see. It's my electricity. It was doing it during council meeting last night, so.
Oh goodness.
We should, we had, so don't touch it, can you guys hear me? Just don't touch it, okay, don't touch it. No, that's hard for me to do.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, let's move on then to.
I'm sorry.
Did you get, did you get Mason, Mason was a second. Yes.
That was the first.
Home favor, Sam.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on then to agenda item number three. This is a public hearing. Uh, for or against terrorist ordinance five thirty one, a land use amendment. And then turn some time over to Jenny who'll give us. Background on this.
Yes, thanks commissioner, we are looking at this ordinance five thirty one, which is inclusive of the updates. For title ten, chapter ninety eight, part seven, the appeal authorities and variances, this is to better align our policy, our planning commission and. Appeal authority policies with the state law, they do have our current code hold up if you.
Yes.
Need to compare anything or wanted to review maybe what some of that looks like, but we did repeal. The sections. Eleven dot zero two dot zero four zero and eleven dot zero two dot zero five zero. And, and we renumbered the rest that are remaining in that. And so if you'd like to review them, you're welcome to, but the new code listed out in. Point zero one, point zero one zero starts with the establishment of planning commission. Yet. It defines the, the membership of the planning commission to three, between three to five members and alternates as necessary or needed. And the term of each planning commissioner has been reduced by one year to a four year term, which is more in line and consistent with city council members that serve. And maybe not quite, it's not a long commitment for those that would like to serve.
Thank you, that's, I appreciate that.
And the vacancies are filled by appointments by the mayor and the mayor may also remove the member at any time. The powers and duties are outlined, the presiding officer. The quorum. The rules and the compensation are all outlined and very similar to our current, but included. The second portion, two point zero one point zero two zero is outlining the appeal authority, what we found in some of our recent. Um, issues that have come up in the city is that we had some conflicts between some of the codes, this is cleaning up the appeal authority in the land use area. So it outlines the establishment and the appointment of the, of the appeal authority by the mayor. And their. Spoke and decisions and the options once the appeal authority made determination. And you all have time to review this stuff, and in the last section, the revocation. Makes the change to eleven dot eighteen dot one hundred for the revocation of. Uh, the conditional use permit to the authority of the planning commission to do so. So that's what is proposed in the ordinance and you're welcome to take public comments.
Okay. Let's, uh, go ahead and formally open up our public hearing, those of you who are interested in making comments, please step forward and share what you have. Yes, great, thank you, I'm glad you noticed that. So if anybody would like to come forward, please come forward, we would like to address this issue specifically. Doesn't look like we have anybody that would like to. Comment. And if that is the case, then I'm gonna go ahead and. Formally close the public hearing. Did any of you have any questions, I had a, you know, I, I am wondering about number five on the planning commission. Hey, glad the mayor's here, it seems to me like that's rather. An open statement, I mean, if there's some criteria that the mayor uses to. Invite people to join. Commission, there ought to be some criteria. That's established. For their removal. Did. Any of you guys have any thoughts on that, I, I'm just thinking, I mean, it would probably be some kind of gross negligence and, and what they do other than that. I mean, I can see how that could be abused, I mean, if you've got a mayor that doesn't like a commission member, just for political and personal reasons that just. You know, I, I'm not sure we want to. What's that?
As part of their authority to appoint people too, they don't have to ask us if we want to stay. And with it being a four year term, every mayor will have the opportunity to replace us then if they want to as well, so I don't have an issue with that. It's not spelled out what requirements the mayor has to.
And I think it'd have to be really bad, I'm sure he or she would come talk to you and maybe it's someone that just doesn't show up anymore and they want to have that right. I, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, it's, it's a pretty blanket, open statement, like, I, I wonder if we have. If we have the option to put some language in there or not to just.
Pram or something, like maybe some kind of like. Explanation.
Yeah, I, I don't want any authority, however nice they are to have.
Just to remove this. Even though they already.
So I mean, if, if it's not possible, that's fine, I just thought I would bring up my. My concern on that, is there.
What are your thoughts?
Can I have the mayor?
You can ask my opinion. Um, I always like to know where my, where my limits are, um, but I really think that. That I can determine whether someone's abusing the commissioner's seat or not. But that's me, right, that's, I don't know if the next mayor would feel that way or not, so if you want to give me some guidance on what you want done, that's fine. If, uh, if you feel like it should be, you know, because you don't show up enough, or I would need to know that.
Right, or some kind of language in here.
I think it's important to note the role of the planning commission and the role of the city council, and the mayor does not hold vote in the city council position unless. Special circumstances, and so I think that there is a little more oversight with the mayor being able to. Appoint and remove people, she doesn't vote on issues that come to the city council.
See, I noticed.
Our appointment does get voted on by the city council, and we have the removal voted on by the city council as well.
See, because I, I've noticed in here, right here where it talks about. An order adopted by the city council, so, and some of these, it, it uses. The language, but there's, there's some backup.
So would you like to mimic what's in number two, the mayor, subject to the advice and consent of the city council?
Yeah, suffice that.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
So that way she can still remove us as well, it just goes before the council as well, which means.
It just gives me direction on what I need to do.
And gives everyone an opportunity to see why we're going with, as the city council debates that.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was. And I noticed too, did you guys all notice, uh, number ten there, that, that the mayor has.
They've done that already.
For the, for him, just, just saying.
Just so you know.
It's been rather busy, hasn't it, the last couple of years? Time for overhauls. Yeah.
We can make a motion now, or do you have any others?
I, I was just gonna ask. Yes, anybody else, any other comments with concern?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, to recommend adoption of Harrisville ordinance five thirty one with a change to number five under. Under planning commission, we'd like it to be. Subject to the advice and consent of the city council.
Last thing to that.
Home favors tonight?
Alright.
I'm asleep tonight.
And thank you for the. Okay. All right, that was. Yeah, we just jumped right into number four without mentioning it, so that was, for those that are here, jump right into agenda item number four. Okay, uh, we're now on to agenda item number five then. And this is to approve the conditional use permit for Walmart fuel signs.
So this came before the commission last month for the site plan approval, our code under. Hers will be as code eleven dot twenty three zero seven zero two. Subsection C, electronic signs are only allowed as a conditional use issued by the land use authority, so this action is to approve a conditional use permit. With the guidelines included in the staff memo, that. The conditions that are options for the commissioners to discuss, uh, with regard to the impact of the surrounding community.
You know, the, the wording is kind of interesting there in that, in that top part. Are only allowed as a conditional use issued by the land use authority. So. Out in, in our capacity as planning commissioners right now, so there's a portion of this land use authority that is us and then a portion of this land use authority.
This is just us.
Be given to the new person that will be.
So.
This is us.
Now, this is under the land use authorities, and planning commission has given authority to put conditions on an already approved use. So the use is allowed in the commercial zone, the conditional use permit is allowing an electronic sign, so you can put conditions on that. Uh, with regard to an automatic dimmer to reduce signs, our sign here at City Hall has an automatic dimmer. So at a certain time period when the sun is down, it's not so bright that it affects the traffic on the highway when you're coming up and down the highway. They, they can't have flashing or rapid blinking lights that would distract or cause an issue for drivers.
Well, most of these, they're fairly straightforward, the only one we really have, we wait to set stuff on is six and eight, where they've got the aesthetic purposes and that. Mitigation for surrounding residential uses, so it's turning their existing signs into electronic ones, I don't feel like that will have too much of an impact on the residential that does surround that area. Since they're already on major roads.
Right, I'm sorry, there.
And the dimmer and everything would limit that impact, just.
So here on this map that we're looking at, do we have anyone here? Or we do, they're here on the same one. So on this map where those two red dots are, that's where they're replacing the signs, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
So they're replacing their normal Walmart signs, which aren't electronic.
Okay.
With the proposed ones, which are in the pictures below.
Gotcha.
So kind of. And Washington too.
So the look.
So who, who is it that's here from Walmart?
There was. Is there someone from Walmart, if that is, Chris, would you like to address a question?
Do you guys hear me, okay?
Um, can you turn up a little bit?
Hi, Chris, thanks for joining us, we have a couple of questions for you, can you hear us?
Yes, I was just trying to, turn anything, everything up a little bit, hopefully you can hear me better now. So these are the same signs that we presented to council, uh, the last time. Um, so they're gonna be the same height as the existing pylon signs, they're just a different look and configuration. Uh, and we are adding the price signs to these two signs for advertising the fuel station, uh, if you guys remember, we. We talked through this, uh, when the site plan came through last time, uh, and let you guys know that we're not actually putting a sign on. Uh, that corner next to the fuel station, we're just replacing these two pylons. So that's. Uh, that's what we're requesting, uh, is that we can remove the two existing and replace with the two signs you see on your screen right now.
Okay, okay, very good, so is the sign on the east side. Does the sign face north and south or east and west, so I'm just trying to think of where the, the light would be.
So the signs, um, on the east side, it will say north is planned north, uh, on the screen, um, it faces north and south, so it does not. Uh, it doesn't face to the east, it's north and south.
Okay, great, thank you, uh, and then, uh, on the actual structure itself where. The, the cost that we indicated, I noticed that there's a place on the west side of the building that shows a sign, will there also be one on the east side?
Uh, the canopy, the canopy structure itself?
Yes.
Yes, uh, those are two small signs, we'd like to be able to put those on, on each side, uh, you know, the, it does sit internal to the overall development, you know, away from the major, uh, thoroughfares. So people traveling, if they don't enter, uh, at the location where one of the two pylon signs are gonna be sitting, uh, we wanna be able to indicate the price of fuel to anybody traveling throughout the development.
Right, okay, thank you, I, I just, it just wasn't clear to me, so I thought I would just ask, yeah, I appreciate the explanation.
So obviously they'll be, using my voice, they'll be in compliance with the automatic dimmers as well, they'll be following this guideline they've been giving us, so.
Have you seen the staff memo that we're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah. And do you have any issues with any of those points?
I don't believe so, I, it's pretty standard, we're used to putting dimmers on, uh, you know, so, um, that's not an issue to, to dim any of these lights in the evenings.
Okay, sorry, I should have, I should have. And then just out of curiosity on the, on number six there, when we talked about forty percent of the overall sign surface, we, but what are we, how are we measuring that? How are we referring to that?
That would be the total surface space of the sign, so it could not exceed the digital, just like.
Right, so are we, are we talking about from the very base of it to the very top of it, is it the overall surface of it?
Yes.
So just forty percent of that, okay, alright.
So they can't put Christmas lights all over it. Because then it would have an electronic light on the entire surface. Could be a traffic. Okay, I don't have any other issues or questions, so.
We talked, I think we talked last time too about, uh. Putting some. Trees or some other.
That's not with the signs though, unless you want to mitigate the impact from the signs.
Is that, okay, my, my question was, is that. Do we want that to be part of this conditional use permit, or no?
We addressed it last.
Right, okay.
And I don't think these signs need any extra vegetation either, since. When they're placed on everything that we find.
Thanks, I was just thinking, Chris, just out loud, thank you. Do you have any other questions or concerning this, pretty straightforward? And, uh, we appreciate your good faith efforts to work with the city in this effort. Chris, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, let's go to.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Walmart's fuel station signs.
Right?
Subject to the.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's, uh, make sure we include, uh.
So subject.
They included all the points in the staff memo.
You included all of them, okay, very good, alright. And then. A second, that's okay, home favors, yeah.
Okay, to be clear, there is a fifteen day pill period that we will wait out, and after that is met, we will issue that conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number six then. To grant preliminary approval. For Bailey X Business Condos, the commercial site plan located approximately twenty three forty North Highway eighty nine. Uh, and it looks like Justin's here and can give us an overview. So we'll turn some time over to you, Justin.
Yes, also, Bailey X is here, I think, to turn off and ask any questions, also. As, as it stands right now, with, with staff recommendation to our project management, we are very excited for this project to kind of take under. The city of Harrisville. And, uh, there are a few. There are a few still things. We have to take care of through the site plan and the engineering, um, but as far as the city code and the zoning, they meet all the criteria. Buying a few engineering memos and notes.
I'm Mark Bailey, just, um, we, we've submitted just a couple of hours ago and addressing almost every issue on here, the one that I know is remaining. Uh, we gave will serve letters from all the major utilities, and they've addressed a lot of the plan commentary as well. And I think the one major thing that we don't have at this point is kind of the U dot and a couple of items that pertain to them, I believe all others about two hours ago were submitted. And should have addressed most of the other issues.
And with regards to U dot, sorry, I'm Gage Crowder, um, with regards to U dot, we have reached out to Utah, we've already had the preliminary meeting with them, we're going through that process, we would expect to be approved by then, there's already. Outlets that have been predetermined, it's just a matter of getting approval, formal approval.
Okay, okay, good, thank you for the update, do you, do you have any questions?
I like it when people do their homework, do you have ideas of what types of businesses are going to occupy these spaces?
Uh, it will be a wide range of businesses, uh, we obviously don't have anybody signed up currently, but they'll be, uh, it could be law offices, uh, it could be insurance agents, there, we have frontal lots that are. We have front lots that are obviously gonna be, they're going to. Um, encourage a different type of business to go in those versus the ones behind.
Stage one.
I'm just wondering if you're building all offices or building to suit your kitchens.
A lot of them, well, probably all of them will be built to suit, but depending on what we're building to suit, it's gonna depend on who wants to.
We're gonna have the majority of our, our shelves, right, they're gonna have kind of different uses, I think, like we went through in preliminary meetings, you know. Um, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna push, we've got a building up front, you know, um, we, we don't know who's coming, we're not gonna do major restaurants or backing out onto eighty nine and things like that. Like Gage said, we're gonna maybe have law office up there, um, you know, these are gonna just be businesses that, um, can come in, have a small place, come to be clients. Uh, maybe, maybe have some interior storage, things like that, just, just smaller type businesses.
And each of the units, uh, the other thing that's at least interesting about them is they're, each of them are approximately two thousand square feet. Uh, but it's very likely that one business comes in and wants, you know, two units, three units, up to four units, uh, there's more units for buildings, so, our twenty eight thousand square feet for, for building, so. We really don't know exactly who, um, would ultimately end up going in.
I just think maybe of the types of business that been here. That's my only question, I think the idea of it, and it's in a. commercial area or not, to, and right on the highways.
Yeah, well, and I think, you know, we're, we're gonna try and promote this building here to be sort, and we've planned on parking and things like that, to be more of like a. A retail use, um, something, you know, that, that has, you know, the sales taxes and things like that, and these back here that are far less visible will probably be. You know, smaller businesses that are bringing limited clients in, you know, we're gonna push for it, um, you know, we, we know the wants of the city, um, you know, it's just, there's, there's really no guarantee of what will be there, this building will probably be dressed up. Uh, fairly nice on the, the backside facing eighty nine, uh, give some good signage bands and things like that.
And we do have an architect who's working on it and, um, he, he takes a lot of priority in making them look nice, it'll be a very nice looking.
Yeah. You'll have nice finishes with either rock or stone or brick, um, or cinder block split face, um, you know, and have hardy boards and. And, you know, it'll have nice, nice things on it that'll kind of dress up these businesses, so they have a nice place to present their business.
Correct.
Um, that's kind of the, the overall goal we're looking at, to bring something nice to Harrisville.
Also, one other thing that I just should point out, so it's not a point of confusion, um, it looks like the road ends. Here, it does not, it will attach on to the, the triple, the, the triple peaks. The new bar and grill restaurant, and then we'll have a shared access in and out, so there will actually be two access points off of highway.
And we're creating, we're creating, uh, this is treasured fire, if any of you know where they are, we're creating a new access for fire, that was kind of in our preliminary meetings. They wanted an entrance and an exit out, uh, we have cross access at both of those entrances with U dot, we confirmed that, we'll be building this right of way. Uh, curbing gutter, um, you know, there, there was a couple of comments of extending a water line, those have all been addressed in the latest plan, so. I will continue to go through before final with the engineers and make sure that all of those items are addressed and given to you.
Super. That's exciting. Yeah, thank you, I, I don't think, do we have any other questions? I, I think we're good, thank you, I think gentlemen will probably. Include. The city engineer's memo anyway, even though you've submitted those reasons, we just want to make sure.
Sure.
That that he checks that off and that he agrees.
So Matt, Matt received it, and then and then there was also a response letter to each and every item, so yeah, definitely can do that, but it's been submitted just a couple hours.
Right on.
And I don't want to do diligence when we view it with Matt, but.
I like it when people do their homework.
You're right. We're ready, we're ready to get going as soon as you are.
Right on.
Very good. Do you have any other questions, or should I make a motion to that?
I am certainly willing to have you. Here's a motion.
I will give us a motion then, for preliminary approval for Bailey X Business Condos. Are located at approximately twenty-three forty North Highway eighty-nine, subject to that engineer's memo dated February third, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I'll start. And then. With also the following, the conditions that are also indicated. In the service letters, we'll just. Make sure we get all of those approvals and then complain.
Yeah.
Right, I think, I think we've covered. The engineer's memo and the staff memo. And then we can have, who wants to provide a second? Okay, thank you. All in favor, Steve?
All right.
Very good, gentlemen, thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Thanks for working with the city, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Sounds like that's gonna be a handsome tissue. All right. Thanks, Justin, I appreciate. Input there. Okay, let's move on then to agenda item number seven. This is to grant preliminary approval for Gil's building, a commercials and a site plan located at approximately nine ninety-five North, three seventy-five East. And Justin has, turns the time over to Justin, give us some.
So this has been brought before us. And due to staff recommendation, we would like to turn this over to a variance. Committee. Because they are addressing the roadway that attaches upon to a residential. Road. And there is, you know, a code and issue with that, and that would be variance authority, appeal authority.
Is that a different committee than us then?
Yes.
Oh, no, sorry, okay. Yeah, I had issues with that, we want a residential address for this. Potentially got the access on that gravel road, they want to demolish half of.
Well, and then I remember there were a lot of concerns that this would be opening up into that residential neighborhood.
Well, it would be directly have a residential address, so it would be directly stepping into the residential. Or they had issues with. Businesses trying to use that access before.
So catching up with this, I'm a little lost, so this. I remember when we approved it, the zoning change, it's been a number of months since we approved the zoning change. So it sits, this front property sits on Washington Boulevard, right? This, the back west property exits potentially onto three seventy-five east, which is a residential road. What the developer has been proposing here on the site plan is locating the building, there's a currently a gravel, a gravel. Thoroughfare that's been used by people to access Washington Boulevard. His proposal includes putting the building on that north side so that it would eliminate that. Drive through traffic, it would reroute any of that traffic to have to come to this access. Okay. Posed use of this access, this building is not a high-traffic business. It is facing some limitations that are outside of the developer's control with access to Washington Boulevard. Also, its proximity to Larson Lane, but it doesn't allow for a lot of access points to this property. So you have commissioners, you have two options before you, you can grant preliminary approval with a variance hearing being conditioned that needs to be met before. They've applied for final, or we can table it, they could come back at a later time and possibly be put on the agenda for preliminary. And final or preliminary and then do final the following month.
I'd like to get preliminary after we've talked to the variance, can we see how that goes?
To what do you guys?
Can we ask questions to this developer here? Do you have any comments or things you want to tell us?
So I'm Jeff Hales, and I own the cowboy trucks, that cute little cowboy trucks, building that's faces Washington Boulevard. This property sits right in back of that. And when we tore down, if, I don't know if you've noticed over the last couple of years, we've tore down the old chicken coop and cleaned all of that up. And what we did do was cause ourselves a problem, because now people are going through. Our cowboy trucks parking lot, going through and then going out, especially when Larson Lane now has put their. You know, has put their their curb or their, you know, their. You can't turn, you know, left on that, so. So now, they they come in and out of there like crazy. So I thought, well, we've had several designs of this, and Jenny and Brenda kind of know, we've been at this sometimes, so I thought what we would do. Is we would move our building over, shut that off. And then our curbs and everything on this would only allow. The uses of that building, which is a photography. Eighteen, there's eighteen hundred square feet, which is just a photography, which, how that works is, is that you. There'll be a combination lock on it, and if any photographer in any area wants to go in. And just take a family and go in and take a picture, the lighting, we have northern, the, you know, the northern windows and the western windows. You know, they're like sixteen feet high, as you've seen on the, so that the lighting is natural and perfect for that. So you'll only have, you'll only have, you know, maybe three or four cars at any one time there. And then the other part of the building is just gonna be for the cowboy trucks. So when they bring a truck in, if it needs to be washed, it needs to be done something to, they'll, so they'll just be coming in from from the east side. So the traffic there won't be. You know, won't be hardly any at all, it'll probably be less there than possibly maybe a resident, I don't know. But we've tried to make this building, and I don't know if you have any, any, any renderings of that that could show how attractive this building is. Yeah. Have you seen it?
No.
Okay, it's really an attractive building, and I just brought up. A picture of it, just to kind of show you, so you could kind of see. How it's gonna look.
The building already there, man?
Pardon, the building already there? No, okay, no, we're gonna build, but this is, this is what we're doing here. So let me just kind of show you how this building is, it will not face the street. It'll actually face this kind of the southeast, so everybody will pull in so that. The neighbors across the street won't have what they think is a a commercial appeal. So this is.
You got permission to bring it up?
Oh, thank you. So this is the. The west side that faces the street. This would be the north side. This would be the south side, so the parking lot would come in here, then enter here. This over here is, would be the east side, which is next to the cowboy trucks. So it is an attractive building, it's thirty-six hundred square feet, sixty by sixty, we reduced it to kind of fit in that, in that space there. And. When I, when I rezone this. When I rezone this. It was that easy for me to rezone, because your future land use shows this all to be commercial. And so I thought, well, this would be a good spot to put. You know, put this commercial building in there. Not really realizing that I wouldn't be able to access it.
What stood preventing from moving the building to where the parking lot is and having your parking lot on the side of that detention basin? Because you've got the gravel road going there, you could use that gravel road, pave it potentially, and have that turn into your parking lot. And then you have access through that gravel road for the building, but not onto the residential road.
Well, if we don't get a variance, we would have to do something like that.
Yeah.
But my thinking was, this will eventually be commercial.
Right.
Because the price that's on it to purchase it could never be residential, because he's got a price for a commercial price. So I just assumed that the city. Under the pretense of that was gonna be commercial, would allow an access. Because there's no way, in fact, I don't even know if you'll be able to access this off of Washington Boulevard, because of how close you are to the light. The turn lane and everything, I don't know how you would even access.
So what you're saying, what Nathan's recommending, if you were to move it, you still may not have access, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying, I do have that access. I'm saying to move my building all the way to the to the south. Then that causes the problem with the windows, because we have to have all windows on the north, and that's where we'd have to access it. Is the north.
So for your lighting.
Yeah, for the lighting, so it does create a problem, it does create a problem. It sounds like.
It does qualify for a variance, because it's not a hardship that was created by the property owner. The location of the property is not controlled, the access points are not controlled by something that you created, you haven't created this hardship. You meet circumstances of work, so it does qualify to be considered for a variance.
So we can let them consider it, and that's not a hard job to consider.
So you could table, you could table the item, we could hold the variance hearing, he could get his recommendation from the appeal authority on that variance. And then we can read, once we've completed that, we can put it back on the agenda for you.
I think that would probably be the best process if you're, if you're okay with that.
Right now, yeah, that would be great.
If that will help come through computer design ideas as well, so. Sounds like.
Yeah.
A little more time.
So the hardship that's created is one of the items that are.
To qualify for a variance under state law, it has to be a hardship not created by a property owner. And the hardship that's created on your property is not related to something you're.
You know.
Created, you have U dot access issues on the Washington Boulevard, and because of its proximity to Larson Lane. You you have some difficult circumstances to mitigate, and so that's what a variance is for. There's just obviously no guarantee that that would be allowed, but we can go that route, and then it gives you better clarification before you get further on.
And how that it comes back to us, so we'll know whether or not you're allowed to have that access there, so. You know, make it easier for you, and it'll make.
Then in hopes that we've eliminated what was becoming a big problem with that through traffic. We were gonna have to do something like that.
So did you say they were coming through the neighborhood and?
Yeah, they were coming, they were turning off of, they were turning off the Washington Boulevard, coming right through here, and coming right out here. And then going in, it was a constant in and out.
Wow.
Because that road goes south to Larson Lane, and there's a median right on that.
Yeah, so right here, so this median's here, so you can't turn in here, so they were just coming in here, going out here. And it's causing problems. You know, so. Hey, well. We'll, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
We have even motion. Do you want to take a turn? Okay.
I make a motion that we table what's agenda item number seven. The Hale property. Now, building and commercial site plan located approximately nine ninety-seven or nine ninety-five North, three seventy-five East.
Okay, subject to.
Subject to a variance hearing.
Variants hearing. And.
Any engineer.
And any recommendation. Okay, very good, thank you. Just want to make sure we're all in. Okay, can I, can I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor, Steve? Very good. Well, thank you, I appreciate your feedback, and thanks for being.
When we get that hearing set up.
Very good, is that a separate?
It is.
A film separate.
Yep, it will be held here, but it's a separate appeal authority that will. Hear and we'll, we'll prepare the city side, and you'll prepare your side, and we will let the appeal authority make a decision.
Hey, very good.
Okay, good luck to you.
Thanks. Hopefully see you soon.
Right on. Okay, have a great evening, thank you. Okay, I love that, thank you, all the information we got from what you said and what he said. Sure sounds like he needed some extra time to think through how this would be done, so that just, that definitely seemed like the right course of action.
It needs to go to the variance support comes out, so we know what we can, can't say.
That's right.
Subject to that, and it's, they come back to us for the same reason.
Well, I think Bill would be so proud of us. I hope so. Oh, we'll let you go with the next agenda.
You're so kind, thank you. Okay, well. If there are no other, let's move to agenda item number eight then. Any other follow-ups, anything?
So the follow-up from staff would be the reminder that the Ben Lomond Golf Course Open House is next Wednesday from seven to nine at Orion Junior High. And welcome to the tenth, we'll have a lot of exhibits available, and we've got a lot of social media feedback, there was also an article in the newspaper. Standard Examiner about that development. And additionally, I understand it's the same day that the training was scheduled earlier in the day. Or is scheduled.
The one at Mary Mary's, so. Do we need to sign up for that?
I guess there was a link to sign up.
If you want credit for it, you have to sign up in advance.
If you need the link again, please just reach out, I can rest on that. Other than that, we're busy again tomorrow with a loaded project management meeting, as we continue through all of our development projects, we've seen. We've held some pre-construction meetings, Justin can fill in on all those pre-construction meetings on the various developments.
So, yeah, we've held a pre-construction meeting with the Montgomery Farms. They are breaking ground and started to dig the detention ponds, have not started to place pipe in the ground yet. The Ashland Cove out here on eighty-nine next to the church has been, has been staked out. They're still trying to figure out some elevations to try, trying to to fix the ditch ditch issue. So we're working. In conjunction with their engineer and our city engineer to to. Come up with the best solution, that there's not a, for every long-term maintenance of the ditch users of the siphon. There will be another pre-construction meeting tomorrow morning. After project management for the Copperwoods Development. That has been fully passed through city council last night, so we're moving forward with that. And very much so, you'll see a little activity on the west side of Highway eighty-nine at the Ben Lomond Commercial. Site, they're actually doing some geotech engineering right now. They're doing their geotech surveys, so that they can better have. The exact engineered plans, so when we move forward with their site plan. We'll bring those renderings and drawings to you guys and get that pushed through as as they have. Approval last night for their zoning change. Through city council, so it's it's great to work together on these. Get the best outcome for the city, and I appreciate all you guys do.
Okay, thank you, Justin. It's in here, we got loose. Hey, thank you, Justin, it's in here, we got loose connection here somewhere.
Okay, cause when you moved this, this little iPad, I didn't notice, why did that get fired? Okay, well, at least we figured out that, I think it did, when I did something.
Yeah. Although I.
We had some, we had some issues, and we just had the sound system guy out here early in this year, last, late last week. So we will, we will have that taken care of hopefully for your next meeting.
I had a little more excitement.
That's right.
Alright, well, it sounds good, okay, any other comments or anything? Alright, with that being said, I will formally adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Just don't slap people.